You're on.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board. We're going to start our meeting with minutes, vouchers. We've got some correspondence and we have one public hearing and discussion about public acceptance of streets. Do they have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for the 27 March 2019 Planning Board meeting as written.
A second.
Are you ready for vote? Will we vote approve? You have a question?
No, I'm saying aye. Were you calling it?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Sorry.
Correspondence, is there any questions about that? Got one, two, three, four, five from other communities that are doing amendments.
I'll make a motion to consider the correspondence as read.
A second.
All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, question was included in the correspondence was the text of the town law.
That's right.
And I was wondering if anybody had any comments on that. I read through it and there's some things I don't understand, but I don't need to understand them.
Make a motion to put that at the, along with planning office business after the review of the public acceptance of streets.
Cool.
Move that in.
Sure.
Second.
Do you all approve that?
Cool.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to have a hearing for an application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan. We have to, John? We have to vote to...
Madam Chairman, if you will hear it, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing of the special permit definitive subdivision for 554 North Street, map 18, lot 39.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Should we read the public notice now?
That would be good. If you get a public, I didn't get that in my practice, public notice.
Just a question of...
Did you? I'm looking, I'm looking. I said it was. I'm looking.
I'm sick of it.
I saw it electronically.
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81 N., I mean, excuse me, 81, Chapter 365-37 of the Georgetown Planning Board Subdivision Regulations in Section 16573-2 of the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing this evening, 10 April 2019, hearing to start at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. The purpose for this hearing is to provide information, answer questions, and hear concerns regarding the following described special permit and definitive subdivision applications for property located at 554 North Street and shown on the Town Assessors Map, 18 as lot 39. Set applications, which will be heard concurrently this evening, call for the creation of two new dwelling lots to front along a proposed court coming off 554 North Street and for the existing dwelling at said address to remain, actually to be removed on a newly configured So we're here this evening to open up the public hearing and hear public comment. Anybody that wishes to speak as a proponent or in opposition, if you could come up after the presentation and just put your name and address on this yellow sheet of paper, state it aloud, your name and address, and then whatever your questions and concerns are, you could voice those, and then after everybody has stated their questions, their concerns, the applicant will rebut those questions and concerns or address them, and after which the board will ask the applicant of questions that they have about the development.
Thank you, John.
Madam Chair, before we have the applicants come up, this is difficult for me, I don't know what point to bring this up, but I just want the applicants to be aware of the fact that this is a special permit and they need a supermajority, and right now seated at this table are the four necessary votes for that supermajority. There's a lot of folks in the audience, I'm almost of the mind to say that perhaps what we should do is continue without taking any information at all to a time when we have a fifth member sitting here and they'll have five potential votes to get four. Just saying, just throwing that out there.
And if I could address that, Madam Chairman, you know, we may be in a situation that actually goes beyond the election if there is no write-in candidate, there is nobody actively campaigning for the planning board position, so it would be a write-in, if there is no write-in, it would end up being an appointment by the Board of Selectment, so we could...
And us.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, so it could end up being a situation where, you know, it's at least a month out before we have that fifth member, and conceivably could be a couple of months out. So, we have, and the other thing is, we do have a lot of special permit applications that are being scheduled for the next meeting and the following several meetings, so it is up to the applicant if they want to proceed.
I was just going to say, it's entirely up to the applicant whether they want to ask for continuation.
Under the circumstances, you may want to take into consideration, as Harry pointed out, that you need all four members to vote on this because, you know, it is a special permit slash definitive subdivision plan, but because it's a special permit, it requires all members to vote in the affirmative.
And just to reconfirm, do you estimate a timeline at the minimum that the fifth member could be joining is...
We will most likely have, if I may, Madam Moderator, I would think after the election, the election's on the 13th, I believe?
Yeah.
So by the 14th of next month.
Clarify for the audience that because one person is not present on our board, it's a five-man board, the one person would be considered a no. So out of the four of us remaining, if there was another no, it would be dead in the water, it would be over. So it's up to the applicant to choose if he wants to proceed with the four of us.
So you said April 13th, you have someone?
No, no.
May 13th.
Would you want...
It's a tough, it's a tough call, yeah.
I'm sure, you know, it'll be continued anyway, so it's up to you.
Will things be definitive tonight? I mean, this has to go to a peer review as well, correct?
That's already taken place, the initial peer review, but we're not talking about that tonight because we didn't receive that peer review in time for this meeting.
Can I ask how peer review was done before we opened the hearing?
In accordance with our previous discussion.
Oh, the way we were trying to do it before.
Yeah, which I want to continue that discussion later on tonight under other business.
Because this is a court, it's a special permit with subdivision regs being applied, so it's two and one in a sense, so it's up to you.
If the applicant would like to continue to have no testimony tonight and continue, would that put the second meeting in May?
I would suggest that, second meeting in May, hold on one second.
The conversation was May 13th was the earliest.
May 22nd, I think.
Yeah, yeah, May 22nd. The election.
Election. So if we could do that, thank you for bringing that up, and it's, we have work to do on sidelines anyway, so it makes sense just to be cautious and take that... Anything?
Now, we have to apologize to the audience, but that's the situation we're in. Sorry for having to come here this evening, but we're continuing the public hearing from this evening to May 22nd. Meeting will start at 7:00. All of our planning board meetings do start at 7:00, and they're all held in this particular room unless otherwise notified, but we will continue this public hearing May 22nd, and this is your formal notice of that. You won't receive another public notice in the mail.
Madam Chair, if you'll hear it, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for 554 North Street, special permit definitive subdivision to May 22nd, 2019, at 7:05.
I'd like to just ask if there's anybody in the audience who has any comments or questions.
And I'd like, I want to, and the reason I'm making that continuance is with the understanding that no information is being presented tonight, none, no information is being presented this evening.
So you can't ask questions?
So we're not taking any information at all as a board, and the reason I'm making that motion is now the newest member, when they come in, can, will be able to vote on this project because they will, there will be no information that they have to catch up on.
And I want you to understand, my question really wasn't about the content, it was if people had questions about the process, if it's confusing, if, you know, if there's any question about the process, we're happy to answer it.
We'll happily go downstairs to an open room and answer any question you have tonight, and you can look at all the plans and information, it'll be just an informal meeting outside this room.
Yeah.
I made the motion. I second the motion.
You seconded that motion?
I'll go turn the lights on.
We need your signature, don't we?
So motion to continue?
Motion to continue until the...
April 23rd, is it?
Yeah, May 23rd.
May 23rd.
All right.
You think we should do an extension, three-month, remember we used to do the three-month?
We always did it quarterly.
Quarterly, let's do that.
Yeah, we always do our, it's extension for time for decision, I think we call it a Form H or something, and we do them quarterly.
Yeah, we need a Form H.
Well, no, not at this point, special permit, we don't go as long as they have to go, and we have 60 days when we fly, finalize.
What about the Wednesday?
It's at the end.
What's the Wednesday date?
We have to follow the subdivisions.
Yeah, subdivision.
Oh, they're made.
Yeah.
We can grant the extension in the office too, if I know.
You wait for a favor.
Turn the lights on, actually.
Turn the lights on downstairs?
We'll give you some light downstairs in the second floor meeting room or something. Folks, you're not going to get any more letters, okay?
Yeah.
You got a letter, you have to be aware of the fact that May 22nd, this room, this will continue on, and hopefully there'll be five of us so that we'll be able to come to a decision.
I think he's coming for the Form H.
Okay, that's possible.
Hopefully.
But let's see.
And by the way, you know, there's like a plurality of what you folks, I'm sure you all have your own individual concerns, but if, to write a letter and put it in writing and submit it, the hearing is open now, you can submit letters, if that's more convenient for you, I know it's sometimes inconvenient because...
Email to...
You can email John.
You can email him.
You get it to him, ask for it to be included, we'll read it in the hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We continued it, but we didn't do the extension.
What, the extension for final action?
No.
Form H, just because there's a definitive built in here too?
No, we have 65 days to have the public hearing, then we have 90 to take a final decision.
So in May, how long is that?
60 after it closes, right?
May, we'll still have 60 days.
After it closes.
Yeah, we're fine.
Tilly was concerned with the fact that it's a definitive, so it's also a definitive, it's two and one.
Yeah.
Nice to see everybody.
Yeah, everything, and I spelled this out to Tilly, we, it's 65 days from the date of filing, from all the public hearing, then we have 90.
Which we're doing.
Yeah, now we have 90 days from now to make a decision.
Or definitive, right? And then like 30 to, 30 to the side or something.
They didn't come in with a preliminary plan.
Right, yeah.
There was no preliminary formal, so it's 135 days.
Oh, second floor. Yeah, but they're most stricted, it's the special permit, so we have to follow that.
Yeah, but this, the special permit, because it's intermingled with the definitive, the definitive subdivision plan in the timeframe takes precedence, so...
And special permit is more restrictive than the subdivision?
Yeah, but we still, no question, we just, we have 90 days, no question.
Okay.
But we have 135 because it's a definitive subdivision plan. When you, if you read those particular laws, Massachusetts general laws...
They're all over the place too, yeah.
I emailed them to Tilly today.
Oh, okay.
But it's, yeah, please do, I'll send you the email.
It'd be confusing, it can be.
Oh, yeah.
What we always did...
These paragraphs are about this long, and they don't stop, they don't have periods.
Gilbert and Sullivan for many years, and that kind of Victorian language, it just never ends.
I think you should add the 48 too, to send to them, because that's the, that's the clause of all, because it's more restrictive than the other.
We always just got Form Hs on quarters, every quarter of the year, pushing out to the next quarter, every, for all the hearings, and you're always covered, you can't go wrong every time.
No, I know.
Yeah, that's what we...
But there's nothing to worry about.
Yeah.
I've only been doing this three or four years.
You got it.
Yeah, but you've been up in New Hampshire.
Well, that was even more complicated.
That's a list for your dice.
Yeah, but there's more complicated laws up there than there are in Massachusetts, and they actually make a lot more sense than you think.
Oh, yeah, to get that in there, had to get that last little...
All right, all right.
All right, moving along.
Okay, so now we have a discussion on or review of public acceptance of streets.
I think we have an audience tonight for this particular subject.
Hello.
Did you get my latest email right before?
I did.
I welcomed them here, and I welcome their public participation and...
I'm a warrior.
Come on up here, because nobody else is here, I mean, we're not, we don't bite you.
Sorry for the late invitation.
Okay, I was going to come either way.
Do you want to be on the planning board?
I was thinking, I was just talking about it, I was like, I could do this.
I'm telling you, young people.
Got a seat?
Yeah, no, I'm serious.
What does it take to be on the planning board? Like, what do you need to know? I don't know anything about land.
You learn.
I'm open to learning.
Learn as you go.
Okay.
I've only been in this position since June, and I didn't know.
There are what, a handful of things that we approve, building, it's all in accordance with the town bylaws.
Okay.
So basically what we're doing is making sure that this stuff makes sense and it lines up with the bylaws.
Works in association management, so I know all about bylaws and board meetings and...
You, and I'm serious.
Sounds like a perfect candidate.
I'm serious.
You're welcome to attend there.
I think if you can read, you can be a planning board member. You just have to, a lot of reading, a lot of reading.
My background is not in real estate development or building or anything like that. My background, I'm retired, was in IT project management consulting.
Gotcha, cool.
Okay, John, do you want to start?
It's a system, you learn the system.
Discussion?
No, I do.
Yeah. I guess we'll just start off the discussion. This was a subject that, dating back to 2009, 2010, the board was earnestly involved in. Nick Kraknel was the planner at the time, so I'd say dating back to 2000, 2001, maybe a little earlier, the state started tying in Chapter 90 funds relative to a community's publicly accepted streets and their associated mileage.
Gosh.
A lot of towns, municipalities throughout Massachusetts got caught with the proverbial pants down because they had miles and miles of unaccepted roadways that they weren't eligible for Chapter 90 funds. So the whole catalyst for, you know, municipalities throughout the Commonwealth moving in the direction of having these old roadways that were not formally accepted to be accepted as public ways, and it's an onerous process for most communities.
But it's worth it because you get money, so...
Right, right, by miles. So the more miles you have of publicly accepted roadways, the more Chapter money, uh, Chapter 90 monies you're eligible for as a community.
Back in 2010, we took up this mantle, so to speak, as the planning board to bring in the, except the roadways that should have been accepted, that, not the, not the historic ones, but the ones that were, were already approved by a prior planning board.
Yeah.
And we came up with a map, just a very crude map that we made.
Yeah.
Where we picked a few and just highlighted them, and because of that, you could see which one obviously were the longest ones because you get paid by the foot, literally, it's by the mile by the foot, so we just, and I want to say, this thing probably dates back from 2009, something like that, that was just something Nick and I cooked up crudely. And I want to say, I want to say most of those streets, we did it, we were hitting two, three sometimes, street acceptances.
Yeah.
At every town meeting, and then, and then we just, it just sort of petered out.
And of course, this doesn't have any...
This is not updated.
But I mean, this doesn't have any impact on the services that the people on those roads receive, right?
My understanding is we were, we were plowing all these roads anyway, so, I mean, we were spending money on them, but we weren't gaining anything.
Was it technical, or is there some, is it technicality, or is there a technical having, issue having to do with the width of the underlayment or sight lines or anything?
It got dropped, basically, the, these subdivisions were built, they were permitted, they were built.
Oh, got it.
And at one point, all the lots were released, the houses all got sold, and at some point, the developer should have come in and said, I'd like my road accepted now, please accept my road, but they did not.
Right.
And this board sort of just lost track of it and wanted on on.
Right.
Some of these were quite old.
Thanks.
Is there a way that, I mean, yeah, this catch-up, the way we have to do, but going forward for every new road that's created, the developer, like the last step they have to do is they have to come in to...
That's the last checkbox.
Right, exactly, and to have somebody follow up that it's done, because that way it prevents us from 10 years from now, oh, we have all these roads we have to deal with.
Would be good, would be a good way to do it.
It's a good idea.
Would be a good way to do it.
Yeah.
I don't have any answer for that, John.
Like, I don't know who would implement that, but...
So, no, I do appreciate, you know, and I mentioned that in our staff report, that Tilly and you would bring in a historical perspective to what has taken place in the past, and so that's what we needed, just to get the discussion started. In the staff report for tonight, I did include my old memo, our staff report from last year when we were just having a chance to look at this subject, and in that staff report, I got the list from Pete Durkey.
Right.
Of all of the roadways in town and their present status.
Do you remember?
Yeah. So to start off with, his list...
John, a number of these are not just subdivision roadways that were approved subdivision roadways, but they're all, they're private ways that were in existence and are now on the official town map. I'm looking, and it goes on and on and on.
Yeah.
And not all of these on this list naturally are ready for private at this point or unaccepted at this point. I'm almost wondering if, as crude as this was, and I'm not asking for us to do this in-house crude, I'm wondering if we have any LTA hours with Merrimack Valley, maybe Merrimack Valley, for, for me to come up with a map like this was, you know, just something on the computer, but it was done very crudely, but I'm sure Merrimack Valley, if we have some LTA hours.
Yeah, we have...
I'm sure Gerard's gang could create a...
Just build an overlay, boom.
Absolutely, just showing...
Maybe he's already done it for Peter, but it'd be a good tool.
Yeah, we have about, I think we have 18 hours, at least 18 hours left, we just borrowed some, having to do with assessing.
Oh, my gosh, that's terrific.
In the afternoon.
Well, we can ask.
That's a lot of hours.
We can ask. Yeah, I mean, this is the database right here.
But the view is, having the map is if, if we could see the, the ones that had yet to be accepted that were approved by the planning board previously in years past.
Right.
And if we could see all the unaccepted others, all the other ones that, the historic ones that just came there, you know, that were in existence before zoning even came there.
Right.
I would have a question with Peter about where you see the one house driveway on there? Is that part of the 11.65 miles?
No, actually, what Peter did with this list, he put asterisks beside those ones that he wanted us to tackle as a planning board to recommend to become public ways, and there aren't that many of them.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the priority list. Now Chaplain Hills Road, that's already a warrant article.
That's in play for this town meeting.
So there's five that he has checked.
Longview, Lynn Circle.
How is Longview in that one? That's...
See, that's on there, and that's the U-shaped road at the end, at the top of the road. That's, that's one of those newer subdivisions, right?
Yeah.
But the paperwork wasn't complete, and the work's not done until the paperwork's complete, so that has to be chased down. I don't know if the, the developer is still accessible.
Yeah, that, what happens if you can't even get the developer?
Well, see, this is an issue.
That's what's happened.
A lot of times, the developer, as soon as they sell that last lot, some of these folks do these as LLCs, and as soon as I release that last lot and I get my surety back, bye-bye, I'm gone.
Yeah, but that, we, all towns realized that problem in the late 80s and early 90s when we had that vicious real estate downturn, and people would belly up overnight, you know, subdivisions were incomplete everywhere, and, you know, in that era, towns learned that you had to have the cash in hand, you know, whether it was a cash deposit, a check, a surety amount, letters of credit, which you don't, this town doesn't like, but we...
We always did the tripartites.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town council doesn't like it, you know.
But as long as you can get, the town can get your hands on the money to finish the project, and that's what a tripartite...
That's the problem, one of the problems, is that when we did the backlog of those that were not accepted and they were approved by the planning board, the money was automatically not sent to the town council to do any backup, it was dispersed to the, if we, to the applicant, the developer, which I always disagreed with.
Yeah.
So that should be clarified because I think that the developer should be responsible for the payment of the cost, because there's many hours of doing research and, and the town is paying for it.
Right, but very, very frequently, what we have left, what the town is holding is either a 53G account and an M account, which was specifically for reviewing inspections, site inspections, or we have surety, which is... Or we have surety, which is a surety on the lots that, that guarantees the lots. And unfortunately, you can't use either one of those funds for legal fees.
Do you have that in somewhere in the law?
We were told that, yeah.
Yeah, but
We were told that by town council.
Yeah, so that's, that's one aspect. That, that's the surety, but the tripartite agreement.
That is the surety.
Yeah, that's the surety, that's to ensure the completion of the subdivision. And you, you can have the contingency amount, you know, added on to it. But this town doesn't double.
That's, that's, we gotta find a way.
And maybe my understanding was less than perfect. But my understanding was because it is surety, it, it, all it can do is guarantee the performance of the development of the roadway itself and the appurtenances. Once you try to take that money and say, oh, we're gonna take a little and we're gonna spend it on legal fees to get as-built, um, easements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Once you try to do that, you're over a line. That was my understanding.
Are you saying just on account of them being legal fees? So, these are more administrative fees?
Yeah, legal fees, legal fees.
But I mean, the, these costs that you're talking about are more administrative costs, aren't they?
The costs.
We have about, excuse me, I'm sure you may be right with the subdivision, but we have a town general bylaw that says that if we have to pay expenses for any permitting, they pay for it. And it's, it's a general law.
Then, no, you're correct, you're correct. That, it's a separate law.
We're talking about developers that are gone.
Right.
They're, they're gone.
So, maybe we could make a list of what we should check with town council. Let's have some backup here.
Yeah, now, you know, for, for tonight, though, I, I, I would, I told you I was gonna start searching for documents that might help us out there in the internet. There's a seventy-five page publication specific to Massachusetts on this issue, so I'll have that for a homework assignment.
I move that Joanne reads it and summarizes it for us and gets back to us.
That's not fair.
If you have trouble sleeping at night.
We all need a hobby. We'll all take, uh,
Guarantee to put you asleep, so you'll probably take it ten nights.
You know, we, I'm gonna key in on the money again. The chapter ninety money is important, there's no doubt about it. And when I was looking through, you can get on the DOT website, which you sent me a lot of good stuff, I, I was looking at it today. They have a chart there of how much money every community is getting from chapter ninety money for twenty nineteen. And obviously, there's some kind of formula there because they had three columns. And one was population, which was based on, uh, twenty-ten. Twenty-ten and and then they had, um, how many miles, obviously, and, uh, there's another column now again, uh, was, uh, employment.
Employment?
Employment.
What does employment mean if you're?
I don't know, but that was the third column. And so, they have some kind of formula, I'm guessing, how they calculate what you get for each community. So, my thought is, it says, yes, if we added twelve more compared to the list that I was reviewing of other communities, if this is accurate, we added twelve more miles, we would get at least ninety thousand dollars more this year. And, you know, that's something to consider. And the other thing is and the, well, we're in this state where we're trying to find ways to
Get more money.
Bring money into the community.
This is legit money that really is, it's ours.
Right. Right, we just have to do our homework and
Right.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, is that, um, I'm not sure about the, uh, tax assessment for private roads. Cause I, that isn't my area, so that would be something that Mr. Barbe could have maybe help us on. As far as I know, they, they have never had an abatement on it, uh, for each taxpayer to come in and say, I got a private road. Or, or, um, usually, they just measure the building and the lots and that's it, as far as I know. But
It may be that simple, hopefully.
Yeah, but the fact is, is that if you've got an accepted road and it's in good condition, the value of every home on that property, that road, will come up. And your taxes will go with that as to the sale of the price, of the marketing that's involved. A lot of issues, but, um, would think that anyone that has a good road has made an impression on a, on a buyer.
Could be, could be. I wanted to, to get, if, if I may, um, to Harry's suggestion about analytical work to, to identify the most, um, uh, valuable.
Beneficial.
Like a new map, an updated map.
I think that's, I think That's why I say a map versus what we have. We have a very good list and, you know, it's a little difficult here and there, but, uh, the beauty of creating the map is, number one, you're
You can see where the roads are.
You're cutting out the chaf- the chafe there. There's, there's, the data that you don't have there is, uh, you don't have length. And length of road, I mean,
That's, that's equates to dollars.
So, to use this list to create a map.
Well, yes.
Gerard would actually, uh, the accepted roads versus the, yeah. Well, the thing is, that list is twenty-fourteen and we've accepted since, so. Without data, it's us.
Yeah, if he can
Come up with fresh data.
If he can index the, the street, the, the graphical location of the street to the name, then you can filter on whatever we tell him to filter on.
I'm almost envisioning two colors.
Sure.
So, the lines that it'll be drawing.
Absolutely.
For one color for, um, subdivisions that were approved but never got to town meeting to be accepted.
Could we pursue that with these guys?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there wasn't a second. I made the motion, but it wasn't a second.
Where are your friends, your buddy?
All second.
Nice.
Are we ready to vote? Vote for approval?
Aye. Then we, we'll have it and we could constantly be working on it.
Right, exactly.
Can't do it all at the same time.
And it's something that
Chip away at it.
It'll have value for a long
After we're gone.
So, now another, another data-driven decision, if I may, because I'm a numbers guy and I'm a, I'm, 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 I'm looking at it from the perspective that the longer the road,
The more money.
The more money we get. But I'm wondering if that's the way to look at it. I'm wondering if maybe we can have two columns, two lists, two columns. One that prioritizes by length and one that prioritizes by number of dwellings on the road. Because there is another way of looking at this. Another way of looking at it. It's not just the money, it's also the human impact. You have individuals that are living on the street. So, maybe there's, there should be
That's what I was asking before about the level of service that's provided, whether you go on an unapproved or approved road. If, if plowing is it and they're being plowed, life goes on. But if it has to do with power, if it has to do with, um, water, if it has to do with God only wants one.
My understanding is, and it may be imperfect, but my understanding is, the select board indemnifies the highway department to plow for health, life and safety reasons. If there's a fire or a heart attack, somebody has to get an ambulance down the road, it has to be plowed.
So, everything gets plowed, okay?
But I believe state law requi- uh, prohibits the highway department from spending more than five hundred dollars in any kind of maintenance on a, on a road that isn't accepted.
Wow, that's nothing.
Annual.
So, that's a ticket to deterioration.
Absolutely. And well, private roads are supposed to be maintained
By the private
You own fifty feet out. You own, you, you, you own to the center line of the roadway.
There's, there's many options that I've read, um, about a process, if you were living on this private road. One of them is that you can get a petition and it would have to be on the ballot. That the town accept the road, period. That's all you, they would have to say, one sentence.
So, the, the homeowners could make a petition for it?
Have to go, it would have to go to, on the election. It'd have to be on the ballot.
But would it go to town meeting or just, just town election?
Election. According to the law, I read, that, that it can go on that. That's one option. It can go on town meeting, which is what we have here in the handout.
A much easier methodology.
This, this, the, the, um, what this involves is the payment. The butters would have to come up with five hundred dollars plus, plus any other expenses. And there's a state law that you would have to look through if you, I'm sure the lawyers will be looking at it. It's, uh, chapter forty, section C, six C and six D. Six D says that two hundred registered voters or twenty percent of the total registered voters shall have the town vote to accept the provisions of this chapter forty, six C, which would authorize the town to appropriate money for the removal of snow and ice from private way. And that would be a vote of majority. Therein, it would be open to the public use officially. And six C
Is, is that sort of the, 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 how the, the petition works? The petition to town, town meeting?
I, yeah, it could be, yeah. So, then, but I would clarify that. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just picking up the re- research. In six C of, uh, Mass General Law Forty, a town which accepts this section in the manner provided in, in section six D may appropriate money for the removal of snow and ice from such private ways within its limits and open to the public use, or may be designated by the selectmen, provided that for the purposes of section twenty-five of chapter eighty-four, for the removal of snow or ice from such a way, shall not constitute a repair of way. So, this is the end around, that there still would be an unaccepted road, but
They could plow it, but
They could plow it. But they, you know, they couldn't, uh, it would not be considered maintenance, repair.
Context, so the five hundred dollar limit wouldn't be reached.
Context question, how, how much do we get per mile? The reason why I ask is, you know, five hundred dollars, that's not a lot, a lot of money to, to repair a roadway. And, um, you know, we're taking on, I, I will assume that we would get more from the chapter mon- uh, ninety money.
Well, we're getting in the warrant, you'll see.
Than the cost.
If you look at the warrant, you'll see we're gonna get three hundred and something thousand dollars.
I'm sorry.
If, the warrant here in, in here, it would be three hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars we're getting. Did you read the warrant? But it doesn't say per mile, so you'd have to do your math.
Oh, is it, is that, is that how much the town is gonna receive? That's in the warrant, right?
Yeah, cause they have to accept it.
Right.
But we don't know if all of that is due to the fact that we have roadway. It might be other things that Peter's put in for.
No, it's first you have to accept the money, chapter ninety money.
It's specifically the chapter, chapter ninety money, it's in the warrant. I did read that.
Right, but don't highway grants come through chapter ninety?
They do. That's why you have to accept it.
Right, right, but so that may not just, that, that figure may be representative of something that Peter put in for and got a grant for. Which would be over and above.
Process. It's a town, it's a process. It'd be very foolish not to do it. But I'm sure there's a form he has to fill out, like we have here with the list of, uh, fifty-five, uh, miles what was it, fifty-five miles of road? On this list, so he probably has to fill it in. Because when I looked on the, on the website of the state, the DOT one, they had the exact same number as he had submitted on this twenty-fourteen list.
If, if we, if, assume just for the purpose of discussion, that the three hundred thousand, three hundred wherever, three thousand, um, is directly related to, uh, the miles. It's about fifty-five hundred dollars per mile, you know, and per year. Every mile is another fifty-five hundred dollars, you know, and we, that's, uh,
Thousand dollars or something around there.
I know, I know, but
It is what it is. Lots, lots of numbers.
But I think your, your point is well-made about the human effort of this.
Absolutely, there's a human
People are paying their taxes and they want to get some service. So, there, there is a human, it's a plus.
I'm just saying, how do you make these decisions? How, how do you, you know, it's easy to quantify.
But you wanna be humanitarian, though.
And you have to be consistent. You can't pick and choose. You can't be discriminatory.
How about, like, the oldest go by age also, then it add another factor to it?
Well, if you're speaking about age, I mean, I thought of emergency vehicles. If the emergency vehicle goes down these private roads.
No, not, I'm not age of the people, I meant age of the road. Like, how long has the road been there, but
How long, yeah, yeah.
Mohawk Circle was there before. Is that where you were?
That's where we are, yeah. Yeah, it's such a short road.
But please don't discount it.
Yeah, it's a short road, but it's so populated now.
You can come up and speak it. Sign your names.
My back's killing me.
It's okay, I'm gonna, I'll do it. So,
Sign your name. What is your name?
Elise, I live at eighteen Mohawk Circle. I just moved here the last summer. And you guys were talking about, um, how you get money per mile, but Mohawk Circle is nowhere near a mile and, but it's so populated. Just mine and my neighbor's house are less than two years old. So, the numbers from two thousand and ten are obviously very inaccurate. And on top of that, the other side of Mohawk Circle has three new houses in the past year. And that side of Mohawk Circle was paved by the developer. But then, our side wasn't, cause it wasn't the same developer.
That's not Mohawk Circle.
It's, but it says it's Mohawk Circle.
She's been there, she's been there one year and has gone through
So, there's some payment and some not.
Exactly, and
Yes, yeah, Mohawk Circle.
Seen the official town map on that area?
Yes.
Let her, uh, finish.
Have you seen the official town map on that area?
We have at least twenty houses on our street and it's, I, not even, it's like a tenth of a mile.
And when you bought your house, did that question come to mind? Is this accepted?
No, of course not. Of course, I pay my taxes. I don't know what private, what the private road thing meant.
I, I clearly agree. This is kinda deep in the weeds here.
Every person doesn't know that street is private or not private.
Conversation, we're like
Really, yeah.
Everybody got this. This is at, at the request of, if I could just interrupt. This'll help, this'll help our conversation. At the request of Tilly, right, I handed this out tonight. Uh, it is chapter one thirty-four, Streets and Sidewalks, Article Four, Temporary Repairs of Private Ways. Um, it does say in the immediate caption under the title, adopted five twenty-four ninety-three, annual town meeting as Article Forty. And then editor's notes, see messages of general law, uh, chapter forty, section six N in chapter six hundred, Acceptance of General Laws. So, um, we did accept already this supposedly in nineteen ninety-three. And this spells out the limitations of roadways that are unaccepted public ways but maintained by the town. So, all of the provisions of the general laws, chapter, um, forty, section six D and, and C have already been adopted with the specific limitations. Every one of these roadways, and Mohawk is a perfect example.
Perfect.
The, the town can improve defects on the road up to five hundred dollars annually. Make two passes grading the roadway, getting rid of the potholes and whatever. That's what they're limited to. Now, if improvements beyond that, um, want to be made by the owners of property abutting the way, they can petition, um, the town to do so. And it's a betterment charge involved with it. So, the specifics are there. You could get drainage improvements done. You can get more than five hundred dollars of improvements done. But it's billed to the owners of the property and they have to establish that account with the town. So, everything that Massachusetts General Law allows for towns to assume, um, the maintenance and improvement of these particular roadways is already on the books. And that they could set up, you know, an account with the town and the town can draw from that, that, those monies to improve the way, to, up to and including paving it.
Sure, so there is a mechanism.
Yeah, there is, it is, and it's already in place. And, and that, this is the extent of the law that allows for these type of roadways that weren't part of any formal subdivision.
These are the ones that'll be shown in a different color
Right.
On the map.
Yeah, and these, you know, these roads were created originally relative to the type of development. And now, those were cottages. Those were seasonal cottages when those developments, people came out from Boston to enjoy their summers. And those were cottages. People came out from Boston to enjoy their summers, and those were cottages that transformed into year-round houses. This happened all over New England.
Happened in New Jersey, was the first house that I had, like a pad town, it was a camp. And insulated it and turned it into.
What happened was, you know, you went up there and enjoyed it, the kids got older and they needed a place to live, hey, move up to the camp.
Yeah.
You know, and then the jobs spread out post World War II.
The only reason we got Lake Shore. Paved, the first time we had that paved.
Through all summer cottages.
Was because of a grant. And we got that from federal grant. With Merrimack Valley.
Federal estate.
They were over there, federal and state.
Okay.
And they helped them get a grant that did all of, and the drainage.
Wow.
All Lake Shore got played, got paved and drainage and and they did a terrific job. But they ran out of money when they got to Mohawk Circle.
Not in surprise.
It should, it was originally in the plan, but they didn't have enough grant money to do it.
You know, you might wanna talk to, or somebody in Seth Moulton's staff. He's the congressman, right? Bruce Tar is your state senator. And Lenny Miras.
Yeah, I mean, there may be grant money out there, you you never know.
Yeah.
So to get this done, we either have to basically open an HOA account with the town.
Yeah, I think so.
Congress.
This is a big deal, I mean, this is a big deal, and this has been an issue for a long, long time.
Well, you would have to refer to the selectman's office.
You know, it it, there is a huge history involved with road building since the beginning of the country.
I think there's a history to to Mohawk and and Lake Shore and everything there, that was laid out by the selectmen before planning, the planning board existed.
Oh, before, before you had to get any type of planning board approval, people just came up and subdivided property in accordance with.
Yeah.
You know, the law of the time, they they had camp, camp lots, and they were substandard in size.
That was all one, one subdivision.
Yeah.
That was approved by the selectmen.
It's gonna require a lot of analysis, really, to figure out how much it's gonna cost and what.
Just wanna see if I could weigh in on this.
Can I just, can I just say before we get crazy?
Could you state your name for the record?
And put your, what you're telling me.
You know, just modern subdivisions, somebody wants to subdivide their property. They have to pay for the cost of building the roadway. In accordance with the subdivision regulations. Once the road's complete, application is accepted, the as-builts are accepted, it's all done. This planning board recommends to the board of selectmen for the acceptance of that particular road as a public way. That's when it's eligible to become a chapter ninety funded roadway, so it's part of the. Infrastructure maintenance cost and we get money for that, that's what this is all about. Now, for Mohawk, and I'm just using that as an example, and there are many of them in this town. None of that was ever done, you know, that those, those were dirt roads. You access those dirt roads in order to get to your summer.
We didn't have a planning board when that was built.
Right, this was a long, long, long time ago.
Or no rules and regulations period.
Prior to the fifties, right?
So, the town never had money, never had enough money to allocate for the paving of those roadways. Where it was, you know, in the old days it paved Main Street, you know, the town acquired enough money through grants or whatever.
The oil slicked the road.
Right, exactly, you know, throw the gravel down and, you know, put the tire down.
Right.
They still do that in a lot of places, and it works great. You know, especially in New England, when the roads become frost heaves in the winter and get messed up anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the, you you had said that uh. You can, what, uh, grade it twice?
Yeah.
If if there's asphalt there, you're not grading it.
No, but you.
It's it's really talking about those dirt roads.
Yeah.
Those gravel roads.
Yeah.
But our houses, I'm sorry, our houses, our road has definitely been graded more than twice a year.
And it's gotta be costing you more than five hundred dollars.
So this is what I wanna get to, this is, this is the end, this is the end of my talking. So, the town doesn't have extra money to be out there paving roadways, if we get grants, great. However, within the law, there is provision, all of the property owners. Or whoever wants to participate could get together, right, and come up with a cost estimate. You could either do this by yourself or have the town do it. But you come up with a cost estimate to pave the roadway, just as Bailey Lane was just recently paved, and it's a beautiful road. That's one road you don't have to, you know, go through the torture of all the potholes and try to miss them, you can't miss them going on Mohawk, they're just, the whole road's a pothole. It's called the stormwater retention.
Down at the bottom there?
No, the potholes are stormwater retention.
Oh, yes, yes, it's a great system, yeah.
It's a new planning device, it's a new engineered planning device, provided by, provided by nature on gravel roadways. So, so.
Lit, it's lit, it's very lit.
This is, see, this could be a comedy, you know, and, you know, for planners only, though.
Yeah, not for you.
Nobody else, nobody else would get it.
Yeah, real.
It's a tragedy for people to have it, but, you know, everybody can relate to potholes. So you could get together and come up with a sum of money if everybody wanted to put money into the pot and figure out how much it's gonna cost and get the road done either yourself. Or, you know, negotiate with the board of selectmen with a sum of money that you've come up with and try to get the road paved. That's in the law right now.
So do we have to find a budget and then send that to Congress, basically tell them this, how much it's gonna cost?
Board of Selectmen, not Congress, you'll never get anywhere with those.
First off, the Board of Selectmen, I mean, technically it is under the law, but.
Yep.
What would the, would the, what would the, would the prudent move and a move that couldn't hurt? Be to go to the highway surveyor, because he could give you.
Give you an estimate.
This is how, this is how, this is how our present bylaw reads.
Oh, okay.
No repairs shall, shall be commenced unless and until a cash deposit. Equal in the amount to the estimated cost of such repairs. As determined by the highway surveyor is paid to the town and the board of selectmen. Has given its approval for the project. No betterment charges shall be assessed for such repairs. But it goes on, you, you, the property owners abutting those particular ways have to pay.
Well, technically, you own that road.
Yeah, right.
Whether you realize it or not, you own, you own to the center line of that road.
You still have this option, you know, get on the computer and look. Mass General Law Forty, six C and six D, read it very carefully, cuz that's still the state law. And that could be another option for you.
What is it again?
Chapter, it's Mass General Law Forty. Section C, six C and six D.
What do those sections pertain to?
They pertain to private roads.
Yeah.
I just read you one of them, um.
I missed that.
Okay. That's, that's getting a petition to put it on the ballot.
Do you think this would be helpful, the the handout?
For ballot.
You can keep that.
Read the, read the, read the provision by state law.
It's not something that the planning board can do, but it's something that the planning board, I, if I'm not mistaken, this is something that comes up. Uh, Mohawk Circle comes up periodically.
Yeah. And. But there are things we can do, I mean, and I think we're taking a step here, we're gonna have the map made, once we have the map fabricated and uh created, we'll see.
Go ahead.
Could I just make a couple of comments?
Your name is?
I'm James Ogden, I live at thirty-two Thurla Street. Mohawk Circle is certainly a little bit of a gray area. Mohawk Circle was created in a subdivision plan in the fifties, like Harry said. It's about the same timeframe as Lake Shore Drive, it was two like competing development companies that merged the road together. They both snuck in prior to Georgetown adopting zoning, which is why their house was allowed to be built. It was a grandfathered lot and it was on a private way that showed on the town map.
Yeah.
When Georgetown adopted its first pri- uh town map in nineteen eighty-four. They used a basis for um. A nineteen seventy-three planning board map that showed a lot more public and private ways. You can look at a copy of it at the water department. And sometime around nineteen eighty-four, Fred Tru erased a bunch of ways, including Mohawk Circle, off of the map.
Erased it?
The state erased it, yeah. A lot of them.
At the same time, if you wanted to do an A and R. Your A and R was conditioned on the fact that your street was shown on the official town map. So everything that was erased wasn't allowed A and Rs. I thi- I'm thinking, just looking at it, forensically, historically, however you wanna look at it, I think that was the the motivation behind it.
What's an A and R?
A form A lot.
Okay.
It's not a subdivision, it's just one lot.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, and that's what mine.
Approval not required.
Usually one.
Your house lot was actually created on a recorded subdivision plan prior to Georgetown adopting zoning.
Okay.
So you didn't have to go through really any local process. The developer just needed to comply with state laws, which said fifty feet of frontage and five thousand feet of area, and you have a road. One of the nuances that intrigues me is. When a town adopts a. An official map, I believe they're obligated to show any way that services two or more houses. So Mohawk Circle had a ton of houses that were there.
We, we made another vote at town meeting and we put all the private roads on it. See, when he, Tru did it first time, he should have had all the, like you're saying.
Yeah.
All of the ma- all of the roads should have been on it, but he only put accepted roads on it. So he, he really, uh, we had to do it again, cuz we did all that research.
Went through it in two thousand eleven.
And then we put all of, everything should be on there, every road, whether it's private.
Every road that.
If it has two, if it has two or more houses, it has to.
It has to be on there.
And I believe we.
The other nuance is that Mohawk Circle has public water and Georgetown electric power lines through it. There are no recorded easements for those utilities in those roadways.
On Mohawk?
On Mohawk.
No easements.
They have a hydrant right outside their house.
Yeah.
I don't think there are any recorded easements. And it's actually a violation of state law to bring public services into a private. I think into a private way, unless it's incorporated into the official town map.
Well, so you're screwed over like twenty years, you know.
Well, I think it's a, it's an ongoing kinda thing.
So.
Further, most.
She get water electricity, I guess, right?
I think that I, I would think that the developer would have had to go to the water board.
But at the time, it was the fifties.
Well, she just moved in, so I don't think that house, that.
They they paid a system improvement fee of forty-five hundred bucks or whatever when the builder built their home.
She ju- but didn't you say it's a new home and you just moved in?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't work with a builder.
They bought it from the the home builder. The other interesting part is that if you look at assessing records for other private ways in town. Rose down at the assessors' office will tell you that she takes the land area of the private way. Creates a value for it and distributes that amongst the property owners that have bought it.
What?
So they're paying, they're not, because for some reason this is treated differently. Other private ways in town. The the land that the way is laid out on is paid for in taxes by the abutting property owners.
Wow.
Additional assessment tacked on to.
Because they own that land.
Because they own that land.
Right.
Makes perfect sense, but they don't do it for Mohawk Circle.
Interesting.
And a couple other roads in town.
Really?
But that's another indication that it's just missed, it's a, it's an error that sort of needs to be.
I I wanted to roll back to the, to the Fred Tru and the eraser issue.
It might have been white out, you know, the legend, I'm sure it was just a mistake.
Those before white out was created.
That's true. Yeah, he.
It could happen in my father's house.
You used the word forensic, and I wonder if there is a way.
Well, you did too.
You check that, is that right?
I didn't say forensic.
Okay, perhaps you did not. That's not really the point.
So.
I, if I, let me finish. I I wonder if there is a way to know what was erased. Because there would be graphite that would remain.
I think in particular to Mohawk, I think Fred didn't erase the P that was at the center of the. So I think if you look at an old eighty-four map, I think it's either Mohawk or it's one of the other subdivisions, but I think Mohawk, the road lines came off. But he didn't erase the P that denoted it as a private way. He just erased everything else, but left the.
The P's.
Telltale sign that there wasn't, there wasn't a streak there.
But that's not valid anymore, it's the new.
No, it's been overwritten by the two thousand eleven.
Jay, so you know that it was approved, Mohawk Circle was approved as a subdivision plan in fifty-three. Prior to the, the town having a planning board.
Right.
Okay, now, on that plan, have you seen it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Does, is it marked Mohawk as a private way, or was it?
I don't know.
Because um.
Probably have a copy of it on my phone.
Actually, Lake Shore was an association.
I can get to it.
I um, I actually think there might be an association, a punk association for Mohawk as well.
You guys have an association, right?
The selectmen.
You guys actually have access to a little private beach area, I think so. Well, you have your own on Mohawk, it's just overgrown.
For it to be. And the developer never built it in accordance with what the plan required. But things back then were done willy-nilly.
Don't apologize.
So this, this is the interesting part, where some of the older private ways. The abutters to those private ways do own out to the middle, that's standard.
Derelict fee statute.
Yeah. But this one doesn't have that issue because it was approved definitive subdivision plan, Tilly's saying that it was approved by the, the board of selectmen. Which was the practice back then, preceding the establishment of a planning board, the board of selectmen had the right authority to sign definitive plans. What appears to have happened, they approved it, the road was never built in accordance with whatever the standards were at the time, and it could have been gravel at the time, I don't know. But they, yeah, so they allowed it, so this road, if you do a complete forensics, so I'm just assuming things to be. Wrong because the road was neglected, say, by the town to complete it or improve it as time went on. Most likely because of a lack of money. So the town approved the road as a definitive subdivision plan, approved it through the board of selectmen. And that road was never improved. For, because either the developer didn't improve it to the standard, say, a paved road, or he may not have been required to back then.
Well, what happened, I mentioned the grant. Before we could get the money, it had to be voted at town meeting. When they finished the work, they took it off at town meeting. That's, that's.
And then they ran out of the money and it didn't get to go to Mohawk way.
Right.
I mean, there's a, there's an accurate history that has to be uncovered.
Yeah.
I just thought of that.
And it sounds as though, you know, it's just one of those roads that never got the attention that it should have gotten, even though there are so many houses along it.
Right.
But, you know, if the town was to acquire the fundings and allocate the fundings to finish the road or bring it up to speed. It was, you know, in in older times here, roadways were paved by town monies as they were acquired. And this is one of the few that's been left off the list of improving.
Well, I'm really looking forward to seeing that map when Gerard makes it up, when Merrimack Valley makes it up, because I'm, I'm curious to to just take a peek at it.
So you were talking about working with Merrimack Valley to make this map with all the roads. Would our board be on it to then be fixed in the future?
Your private, sure, absolutely, that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about all the ones that aren't accepted. And that's the only ones that are gonna be highlighted in, in my vision of this. Subdivision roadways that have not yet gone to town meeting to be accepted, that were approved by by subdivision, one color. And another color showing private ways that were in existence that aren't accepted right now, that are private ways or just unacceptable.
When does that happen?
You have to ask Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
But that's just a map, that doesn't mean your road's going to be repaired.
I have a question, I just don't know the process.
Well, we're making it as we go, unfortunately.
Merrimack Valley uh has very intricate and sophisticated maps that we have access to.
There's a variation of that map that already exists, it just, it needs to be updated, so.
Okay, so it'll be easy for Gerard to, he'd probably just plug a few layers off or peel a few off or.
So depending on his schedule, whatever his workload is, it could be reasonably assumed that we could get it.
So at some point, when we email you and say, oh, the road needs to be. Filled in, you're gonna tell us that we've reached the five hundred dollar limit?
We have no tally, we're not taking your money.
It's the highway department.
So, but the highway department will tell you no.
Well, we're, we're trying.
Who, you, you, who did you email to come?
Um, I emailed, I think the town clerk.
So she emailed the town clerk to ask them to come pay, like, you know, fill in the road.
Yeah, did you live on that road last? Yeah, did you live on that road last spring?
Yes.
Okay.
I lived there for five years.
So I, I, I have a question, cause I don't go up there all that often, even though there's a development up there now, you go up there more often. Last year, if you recall, was the road graded and the potholes fixed?
Every once in a while, yes.
In, in the spring?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, because they'll, they'll do it twice a year, in the spring and the fall. What happens in the winter, you'd have to go up there on a daily basis, cause that's how fast the, yeah.
Does the school bus still go up it?
Probably not.
The mail, no?
I mean, the mail goes to the end.
The mail van does reach all the way around?
Oh, no, he doesn't go.
He goes up the middle, but we have to go get our mail at the end.
Yeah. So there's no, it's the top and the bottom and the school bus goes at the corner.
So are you up at the top or?
I'm in the middle.
I'm in the middle.
So they just make it up to your house and stop? So you're telling me that the mailman can't make a complete run?
He can.
He can, he still doesn't.
They don't, because our mailboxes are located at the ends of the street.
I was told I was not allowed to have a mailbox.
Oh, okay, they're, oh, the, the group of them.
Yeah, there's a group at the bottom and a group at the top, they're in no particular order.
I gotcha.
Keeping in mind, I, I, I think one of the, one of the issues I remember historically here and fro- about there was, um, there's, there's a pretty steep grade to that, to the roadway.
Yeah, that's my house right there.
It's mine too.
Yeah.
And her house is right across from that.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty steep, so it's, it's difficult to plow, difficult for school buses, it's difficult.
I mean, it probably wouldn't be as difficult if it was graded properly as a paved road.
Sure.
The, the, the ice heaves.
Which isn't your fault.
Which most, which most difficulty is driving that road, you miss something when you do it. You gotta go up in people's yachts.
How many times has, has different people on that road reported damage to their car?
Nope.
I've only lived there since July.
I've never.
I have honestly gone around the other side of Mohawk Circle, it's paved, to avoid the potholes, cause they're really bad, like you can definitely break an axle if you are, if you are not careful.
Yeah, you need a strategy.
It's all about the, the stormwater.
It's a, it's a.
So do you have any more to offer there, Mr. Ogden?
I do.
Okay.
You guys are discussing having Merrimack Valley Planning revamp the town map?
No.
No.
An overlay.
No, just an overlay for.
A data-driven map to show us.
Okay.
Private and non-private. Only.
I think it's chapter forty-one, section eighty-one E that deals with empowering a town to adopt an official town map.
We went through that in eleven, I think.
Yeah, after a plan bearing an endorsement approval accompanied by a certificate provided in the subdivision control law that's been recorded, the way shown in said plan shall be and become a part of the official map. So every definitive subdivision plan you guys have signed is supposed to show, that way is supposed to show on that map.
Yeah.
For some reason, when Nick Cracknell did it in two thousand eleven, I was at home taking care of a newborn, so I wasn't as responsive to him as I wanted to be, but.
Right.
It seemed like he rolled the dice and, like, there's a lot of, like, one-lot subdivisions in town, like Vineyard Lane, never made it on there, it's off Ball Pete Road. So when Turning Leaf came through, they took the name Vineyard Lane and caused a bunch of problems for realtors all over the place.
Oh, my goodness.
Vineyard Lane was an endorsed, recorded subdivision plan.
Yeah. You're, you're, if I may, you're, you're opening up, uh, something I always wanted to go into. Okay, don't laugh. Tonight's, tonight's history night, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be learning something here, I have a funny feeling. There, I, there are a number of little bulbs that come off of main roads. They're one-lot subdivisions.
Right.
They technically are laid out, they're laid out by the planning board, they show a little bulb, but so many of them, I don't even think Merrimack Valley knows the name of them. Absolutely, I know they don't.
That's what I know.
And the other thing is, virtually none of them are built. They're all just driveways. They have, they have the layout, and you could probably tell me more about that. They have the layout for that roadway, because the planning board in years past approved it, but then everybody just went, okay, and a driveway, just a little driveway way, cause it was a one lot.
You guys may actually still have it in your books, it says, uh, a developer can get a building permit for the first house before they build the road, which was the veh- the vehicle, how they could do one-lot subdivisions.
Really?
You could build one house before you had to build the road.
Where is that?
It used, it may be gone, but it was in the subdivision.
Only if that lot fronts on a constructed way.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta do it off.
But these, these are, these are, these are little one-lot subdivisions that shoot in and, you know, a little bulb at the end, and I don't know what standards they want by, but, you know.
And there's no house, it's just.
No, there is a house, there is a house, absolutely.
Like, um, I forget, ash, birch, cherry.
All, all of the Thurlow.
Dogwood or whatever, all off Thurlow.
Yeah.
We're all.
Bang, 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 bang.
Bang, 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 after another.
Yeah.
At some point, it evolved where the planning board required them to be separated by a hundred and twenty-five feet. So when somebody did some on, uh, what's the name of the road?
Where is it?
Off of King Street, Old Jacobs Road.
Okay.
I think there was a few that went in that are on the right, just as you pass the power lines, there's like three one-lot subdivisions there that are essentially just driveways because they didn't build the road before.
Okay.
They only had to build one house, so they never built the road. But that was allowed for in the decision.
I always thought it was just a way that allowed the planning board to, uh, put a house on someone's land if they didn't actually have frontage.
That's right.
That's what it was, it was in, not a worker, it was a workaround.
Unique.
Yeah, creates.
You guys somewhat proactively replaced it with courts and lanes.
Peter must've been watching us on TV.
His ears must've been burning.
Welcome, welcome, Peter.
Madam Chair, may I ask that, madam Chair, may I, may I ask that, that a public official be asked up to see him come up and join us in our discussion here?
Can I ask one more question before I go sit down and be quiet?
We may as well air it out.
Have you guys already talked to the people at five fifty-four?
Oh, no, that got rescheduled.
That table.
No, we had to, um, we had to continue it because we were short.
We don't have the fifth.
Gotcha.
We took it, no, received no information.
May twenty-second.
I rushed here from a Cub Scout meeting to listen to that, but I'm glad I came, cause I was educational.
This is great.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Come back on May twenty-second.
Peter, Peter, come up here, Peter.
It says March thirteenth, I thought it was a repeat.
Come on, man, take one.
We were having a discussion.
I, I heard.
Oh, good, so what's your input?
The, um, the list that I sent you was roads that I thought could be accepted right away. Like, I, I don't know, like, we walked Longview probably twelve years ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, to try to get it accepted, and it's just getting worse and worse, and we're gonna need money to fix it, and there's no money to fix it, and there's twelve years of not getting five thousand dollars or whatever the amount would be.
Wow, yeah.
So those four roads, I'm not thinking about, um, you know, Mohawk, Heather, Hampshire, Pine Grove. I'm thinking about roads that could be accepted, not private roads, roads that are unaccepted that could be accepted.
That should've been done years ago.
Yes.
So you're thinking of the, the roads in that, in that.
Yep.
That first color.
Yeah.
That I'm thinking of.
That, you know, the ones that I put the asterisk next to.
Yep.
That way there, we could go and get the money. For whatever reason, we have to find out what's, you know, if there is money available, like the, the, the contract, the left, and he's no more, then we need to get that money and do whatever we need to do to the road to get it accepted. But I'm not talking about driveways, I'm talking about these roads, like, they've been, you know, we've been plowing them, we've been, um, you know, people use them every day, there's a lot of houses on them, and they're just not accepted for whatever reason. And, you know, if it's a Form J or whatever has to be done, it needs to get done.
Yeah, so just, we didn't even get to that part yet.
Just those, those four roads.
Chaplin Hills Road, that's.
On the list.
Yeah. Now, there are four that he's talking about that remain, Longview Way, Lynn Circle, Maureen Lane, and Martell Way. So this is coming on.
Yeah, Martell's been finished forever. Lynn is off of Lake Shore, it's the, it was paved, I don't know who paved it, somebody paved it, I think, last year. So we might as well try to get it accepted if they're gonna pave it.
Oh, I wanna know who paved it.
I, I, I get.
I'll call them.
It was the, the homeowners. The homeowners paved it, cause it's a private way.
Oh, okay, they have.
Do you have to have sidewalks on your road?
Mohawk Circle, it would be tough, the grade.
Sure, it doesn't.
You would need stairs.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a sidewalk.
No.
No.
We don't need a sidewalk.
You know, and, and the, the problem is, the planning board would have to say how much, how wide the road would have to be paved, you know? So if it's a private way, for the town to accept it, you're not gonna accept the road that they make ten feet wide.
Right.
So you, you know, you have to give them some guidelines of how wide it's gonna be. You know, I think twenty feet would be plenty up there. But there's a grade up there that's, it's steep and it's right by our house.
You're gonna need an engineer to do, this is a whole project.
It, it, it's not easy, because you talk about cutting it down to, to, you know, the lower the grade. You may have to raise another section, you'll be cutting back people's yards, driveways. It's not easy.
You'd really have to go with the natural.
I mean, Pine Grove Ave, there's an instant, right now, there's two, two house lots that are gonna be for sale on Pine Grove Ave, it's off of West Main Street. They need wells down there, so they're talking about, you know, maybe running the water line down there. And, um, you know, when they run the water line down there, they should think about paving it, and I've said this before, maybe on a private road like Pine Grove Ave, it's an easy road, it's flat. You go in there, you grade it, and whoever, like, say that, um, people are gonna go in there and build two or three houses, you give them the price that I pay for pavement, cause my price is a lot cheaper than their price would be. So probably by forty dollars a ton. And then it gets done and everybody wins. Maybe the water department goes from where they start their houses, they add another hundred feet of pipe and put a hydrant in, and the town pays for that. But if anybody that has wells further down the street wanna tie into it, it's something written in someplace that they have to pay, you know, four thousand dollars to tie into the system. You know, so they can recoup their money that they paid to put the hydrant down there. But, I mean, the roads I'm worried about are the roads that are done, paved, and, and they're already starting to fall apart.
First column.
You know, Martell Way, I don't know what's the matter with that road, that we can't get that road accepted? You know, if it's paperwork, if there's, and if that's the case, there's money someplace to do it.
Again, um.
Cause it's probably bonded money.
Were, were identified previously and we were, there were a lot of them.
Yeah.
It was over a dozen, if I recall.
Yeah, oh, but we've, we've been accepting roads, it's, you know.
We remember last, well, of.
And there were some roads that were accepted by the town, never accepted by the state, and now they're accepted by the state. Because once they're accepted by the town, you gotta send in the paperwork, the state to get it accepted, to get your chapter ninety money.
So what is the, uh, unacceptable, why did you do that? Because in my mind, that should be a private road.
Which one is that?
Pine Grove, you just mentioned.
It's unacceptable.
Yeah.
It's, it's a private way.
Was it an approved subdivision?
I don't know.
He's suggesting that the ones that he put stars on.
The fourth.
Are the ones that, that.
All right, where's the star, I see one star.
You guys endorsed the plan for, for an A and R for Pine Grove, like a month ago.
When?
Like a month ago.
Off of Pine Grove?
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are the ones that he wants to.
Oh, these stars, okay.
That was, it really was just a weird situation, cause there's more land to be developed down there, and somebody wanted to develop the whole thing and pave it as part of the, but, um, that deal wasn't consummated, so.
I, I was wondering, um, these women might be, it might be helpful to them to talk to the folks who paved, who contracted to have the, that.
Well, they just got a paving company, came in and paved it. It could've been somebody had their driveway paved.
How they did it, how much it cost.
They probably talked to their neighbors and said, the guy doing my driveway said he would pave this for this amount of money. So, but, you know, they, they can't just go pave Mohawk Circle and then the town accept it.
We don't have to have it accepted, we can just go pave it.
I don't care, I paved it.
Yeah, but it's not the town funds that pave it.
No, I know.
And, and if the town would be okay with it, if everybody got their money, gave it to the town, like, um, John said, it would be great that the town, cause you'd save forty dollars a ton, do, having the town do it, cause we have a cheaper rate, so.
Well, this is, I don't know if you heard it or not, this is why I said you, you wanna talk to this guy.
For one cubic.
One, one mile of road is about a hundred thousand.
We don't even.
We have.
So, but I, I can measure it in, in no.
How many houses are along Mohawk?
There's probably, uh, twenty anyways.
Twenty, and you're probably dealing with maybe five hundred feet of road?
I'd have to measure, cause it, you know, from the top.
It is tricky, cause it's.
It was probably a thousand.
Yep. And there would be some berm that would have to go in, cause water's gonna come down that hill, and it's gonna go, we have to have a place where it can go.
You're gonna need some drainage.
That's what you wanna look at before.
Yeah, it's not like you just go up there and pave the road.
Yeah.
Right, we need drainage.
You know, and we go up there, we grade it once a year, we have the grader come in for a day. He does Heather Road, he does, um, Pine Grove, he does Hampshire Lane, he does Mohawk Circle, every year.
Peter, if, if, if I could just say, just, Peter, um, you know, you know, we bump into each other all the time.
Yep.
Okay, so we're always dealing with this issue, we're, we're trading phone calls and whatnot. Is there any way, i- is, is the season upon us now that you could go up there and just take care of the potholes that are there now?
Um, we went up there, so when they called us last week, we went up there last week and did it that day.
Excellent.
Um, but it was just temporary, we're gonna go up there with a grader and grader.
So what are you complaining about?
It's gonna wash away.
It's gonna wash away.
It already did.
How many times are you up there?
When, when we grade it with the grader, we bring in a compactor and compactor too, and it stays, you know, it's tough up at Mohawk, cause of the hill. Heather Road stays, stays, you know, is, is, you know, good for most of the year. The people that live on it have to drive slow, they can't go fast, and, you know, it's a dirt road, and it's gonna cause the speed bumps, but every year, we're in there, so.
So, so Pete, just to continue, um, if they, the property owners along Mohawk, right, got together, have your own meeting, invite somebody, invite everybody over to one of the residents' houses, and if you could come to an agreement that you, you, you put in to the part of money necessary to pave the roadway and do the drainage work, how would, you, you know, would you be willing to work with them as far as coming up with an estimate?
Yep. I mean, it's no fun plowing in there in the winter time.
So, I mean, this is one way of taking care of it, you're, you're actually finishing a road that, you know, somebody should've finished a long time ago. One way to look at it, if you wanna start the discussion off with residents, is that, you know what? We purchased our properties and probably had, you know, less of a value because of the condition of the roadway, so you probably got, you know, a better deal than if it was on a paved road.
Yeah.
So here's the time, you know, you're not gonna get it done any other way, because the town doesn't have money to be building roadways.
Uh, it, we'd have to make it legal first, too. We'd have to make it so the town either owns that road.
Yeah.
You know, so they'd have to, you know, subdivide their land, so the town owns that right away. And then we, you know, we may not need the easements then for the power and the water, that's, there's no easement.
You can get an easement for the road, I've been reading the state law.
Right.
You don't need to buy it, you know, like the old.
There might be a survey involved with it, too, you know.
A survey, sure.
Just to lay it out. It, it's not, we don't wanna fee in the road, we just wanna.
You know, I could have my engineer, you know, take a ride with me up there, and it's, it's not easy, because you probably don't accept roads as steep as that hill is. So I don't know what you do about that.
Yeah, no.
You have to do a waiver, because there's people living on it. It's, that's my thought.
And this doesn't need to be planning board approval, it needs to go through the board of selectmen. They can ask for our recommendation. Our recommendation would be based on the fire chief being satisfied with the roadway.
Yep.
Grade, and, you know, being able to get his apparatus up.
And most importantly, ultimately, the decision is town meeting, even if this board was in the position where it had to say, oh, it's too steep a grade, we can't recommend it. That doesn't mean the town meeting voters have to accept that. They can still accept it.
There is, there is a process, it's a legal process, and it can actually be achieved. But you have to make it a priority, otherwise you complain, you'll end up complaining forever about the potholes, so.
Oh, yeah, you don't have to tell me, I know.
The community of residents along Mohawk have to come to terms with this.
Yep.
If they want the road improved, they're gonna have to ante up, basically. And, you know, here we have an opportunity. You, you have DPW at your service, Pete is willing to work with you and achieve this. And, you know, this is an achievable item of improvement, and, you know, we just have to make it a priority to happen.
I'm fine, I can do it.
So it'll be a public-private partnership?
I read something recently, and I apologize, because I get Groveland and Georgetown confused quite a bit lately. But somebody's rules and regulations provide for emergency repairs to private ways.
That's us.
Thought it was you guys.
It probably them two.
This board, the planning board, was the deciding authority there to empower improvements to be made, and betterments to be charged to the butters.
Read that.
So not officially, like, have to do it in a cruel way, but if you guys could come up with a plan. And they can get some property owners on board, you guys are seemingly empowered to, to make some improvements.
It's a board of selectmen.
Charge the.
We can only recommend.
Ours is written as board of selectmen, I think.
But, uh, it's probably.
Working in conjunction with DPW is.
If in fact, uh, reading some of the state laws, and it ever got to a ballot to accept the road. What would you do with your budget?
Well, it, it can't be accepted like it is. So that, that's the problem.
But they can do a petition, and you get on it, whether it's good or not.
It's, you know, like, we don't have a ton of money, you know. Do you still live on Ball Pete Road? Do you still live on Ball Pete Road?
I do. What's the matter with you, Peter? Don't you see my sign out there?
How is, how is Ball Pete Road?
Oh, it's, it's, it's a.
It's not good, so, you know, there's a, there's a.
I've been there longer than you're, you've been born.
I don't know about that. I'm older than I look. You know, this, you know, it's not finalized yet, but I, we just did another pavement maintenance program. Um, the first one was done in, um, twenty twelve, and now it's, it's been done again, and it's, um, it's improved a little bit. Not as much as I would have liked, but, you know, we get three hundred and three thousand from the state. And that's, like you said, that formula that you were talking about. It's not, um, you know, but these roads that haven't been on that list would add to that list. And, you know, the little roads add up to a mile. So the four roads that I wrote down on here, like, we're gonna have one at this town meeting. We should try to get the rest on the fall town meeting. You know, Palmer will be on there. So, you know, it, it's great that the, the planning board is, you know, a subdivision's getting done, and it gets accepted. And that's the way it needs to be done. Um, but Longview, Martel, you know, how long have them, how long have those roads been done? And they're not accepted.
Well, one of the problems is lack of ASBILs.
Well, then, somehow, if there's money left over with the bond, they'd need to.
Yeah, you can't use it, that, that's the problem.
So what's the money for?
The money is for, to make sure that the road was.
So we probably have accounts in Georgetown that we don't know where the money is, or, or there's money available, but it's not being used.
Can't legally be used, but what we used to do is, we used to, when this was.
Surety, sureties can be used for ASBIL plans.
So.
It's just the legal stuff, but we have the provision for that.
We have it.
When we were doing this, we, we had actually used to build into our, our budget a few thousand dollars more for ASBILs.
I mean, it's four roads.
We had to have them made.
So there's gotta be some type of plan out there that you could have an engineer go out there and, and get an ASBIL. But if there's money available, it's been sitting there for years not doing anything. And the money that we're not getting.
Peter. For about five years, we got pressure from the accountant to clean out.
You're saying there's no money in the account for that road.
To clean out the balances.
So where's all the money?
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
It is a national, this is a national issue of infrastructure, that there is.
I mean, when a subdivision comes in, there's gotta be a separate account for that subdivision.
That's right.
So you take that money and use it to, if the person that, you know, I, I've heard that there's a person that did a subdivision that passed away. You know, who's gonna get the money?
We had a fight to, almost to court for that.
So.
Pushed that.
You know.
To get that surety.
But we need to, to get these roads accepted, and if there's money available, talk to town council and, cause I don't have the funds.
They said earlier, it was that eighty-nine, ninety-three, ninety-four market.
Yep.
How many contractors would belly up overnight?
Yep.
You know, everything was just left there, and, um, that's when towns realized that, um, you know, it isn't a rosy picture. Things don't get completed all the time, especially if economies take them out. And that's when communities realized you have to have the money in hand when you're allowing people to build.
Yep.
Along roadways that are not complete.
Yep.
So we haven't even discussed Heather Road. George is back there.
Oh, I'm just listening.
You, uh, yeah.
That's another story.
Yep.
That's a, how couldn't that be resolved?
What's that?
You know that you have.
You, you have to, somebody has to go down there and, and say, you know, this is my lot line, this is the lot line. And if there's a stone wall and a tree in the way, they need to be taken down and moved back, or, you know, whatever has to happen. Cause, you know, the way that the, the fence posts were put up, we weren't gonna plow it this year, because there was no place for us to turn around at the end. And, you know, everybody complained and said, oh, you can turn around here. I need to, you know, go down the end, there's no place to turn around besides the end. You know, so it's, it's, and, and if it keeps, if, if he goes and puts his fence back up, which he has the right to, it's his land. I won't be able to turn around down there, and the road won't get plowed by the town, so.
That road, according to the map, goes right down to the water. But it's got all this heavy growth, I'm sure.
Well, it's not heavy growth, it's brush and trees that have grown over the years.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I need a place to turn around. He's nice of us to let us back in to where his garage is and turn around. He was nice enough to take his post out, and so we could plow this year, you know, for his other neighbors. So, but, you know, something needs to be down, you know, I don't know if you get town council involved and a mediator, something, but something needs to be done. So it's, you know, we need better places to turn around. Pine Grove Ave is another one. It's, you're almost in people's driveways trying to turn around. It's, you know, these dirt roads, if I didn't have to plow them, I wouldn't. You know, um, the, the road across from Noonan's. They put three or four houses up there, they'd say it's off East Main Street, it's a common driveway.
Main Street, off East Main Street, yeah.
Right across from Noonan's, up the hill.
Up the hill.
So I can't send the truck that's out there plowing up there, I have to send a special truck, cause it's a, a steep hill. And, you know, so these people that have their driveways, some are East Street, some are E, um, Central Street, going up that road. And, um, this past year, they had to do some work to the roadway, cause it was, you know, potholes, it's private. Um, the brush needs to be cut back, and it says it right in our, you know, the, um, um. I think, what's it called, um, us, you know, our winter, you know, the handout that we gave to the selectmen about, you know, our, um, general orders for, you know, snow removal. That these private ways, they have to take care of the brush, they have to take care of the, the paving of the roadway, if it's, you know, the potholes are too big. We don't go up there and fix potholes, you know? And, you know, I say this to everybody, if there's an emergency anywhere, it doesn't matter if it's your driveway. We're gonna do whatever we can to help out, to, you know, and we've done it, you know, I've done it for my, my own family, so.
Can I ask you a question? So you do the plowing, or not you specifically, but why do you guys on Mohawk Circle go up the hill?
Cause we have, we go both ways, we go up.
Why don't you go down first and then go up?
Well, cause there's a hill the other way, but it's better now, because it used to be, it was, it was bad. And what you did up there to widen baby lane, to take down the tree, that was great, so.
Little by little.
Yep.
Well, I, it's, I think we covered everything, and I'm certainly glad that everybody came down.
Yeah, thanks for.
Talk about it, I mean, we, you're very enlightening.
Yep.
We've been hearing, you know, especially me, because I'm home, to get to the phone, I've been hearing a lot of complaints.
I mean, whatever we can do to do the roads with the stars, that would be great, cause those, to me, it looks like, you know, you gotta accept it like it is. Maybe you need an ASBIL, let's get the ASBIL down and.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe that's a program for Merrimack College. You could have the, the engineering program come over here and do an ASBIL of that road. You know, get a hold of Merrimack College and have their students do it. I don't know if it's, if you can do that. If the people are gone and you can't get an ASBIL done, maybe Merrimack College will come over and do it. Or some, maybe University of Lowell, you know, they're going down there for, they're learning engineering, so.
How does Merrimack Valley help too, Peter?
Um, I, I go through the planning board. Um, I go to their meetings, they, they try to, they, they're doing a lot of stuff right now with OSHA, cause we're now OSHA. So we're doing a lot of, um, seminars with that, in, you know, all my, um, guys are OSHA ten now, they're CPR. Um, all this that we have to do that, just like, you know, Harry does at his job. So it's not like, oh, it's Public Works, it doesn't matter. Now it matters, so.
But did they, did they come up with a plan to assist you on, on what roads need to be done? Did they do any?
No, no, I, I hired a company to come in and do a pavement maintenance program. They just did a program for the sidewalks, to give us, you know, an update on the sidewalks. And, you know, of course, I'd like to add sidewalks, you know, to these main roads, like Noonan's has got the, the, um, the, the mini golf. It would be great if we could extend from Nelson Street to the, to Noonan's. Um, East Main Street, that sidewalk needs to be redone. Um, West Main Street currently in the twenty-five percent design stage for the TIP grant.
Right.
Um, and it went to the state, and the state said that they wanted to put a ten-foot sidewalk in to make it multi-use, because they wanna incorporate the two rail trails. So, you know, they came to me and said it's gonna cost another two hundred and something thousand dollars for engineering, and I told the state I didn't have it. And the state came up with the money and they're paying for it. So it was at twenty-five percent, it came back, and, and they said, oh, we need this stuff done, and I said, I don't have the money, and the state's paying for it, so. So that should be coming soon, and then it will, you know, let the townspeople see it, have an open meeting, cause it's West Main Street. And, um, we're not taking anybody's land, but it will be land that you think you own, but it's the town's, so.
So, uh, you said you had a management plan.
Yep.
Could you share that with us, to see what it looks like?
It should be, I'm gonna be going to a selectmen's meeting and talk about it, and, you know, we have a list of roads that are, you know, and it's only town-accepted roads. And, you know, roads that I can use chapter ninety money on. You know, I can't use chapter ninety money on private ways, so.
Because I, I was active, go attending their meetings at Merrimack Valley. And I remember Groveland had a whole plan.
Yep, I have a plan, I've had it since, uh, twenty twelve. And I, and I've used, I've done, you know, um, let me see. A section of North Street, I have to do another section of North Street. I did Jewett Street, um, Ja, uh, a section of Jackson Street. Tenney, Thurlow, um, Nelson, Elm Street just got done a couple of years ago. What other roads, um? You know, but we've done a lot of, you know, three hundred and three thousand doesn't go far. So, and we used money that was, we had overages on the Central Street project when we got the grant from FEMA. And that was a million and a half dollars of grants that we received from, from FEMA for these storms that we applied for and, and got the grants. And we probably got more money than anybody in the state. And, um, there was overages from that, from the gas lines being moved, the water lines being moved, the telephone poles being moved. And the police details, cause everybody had to go down, um, East Street, Pingree Farm Road. And the money that I got, the FEMA gave us more money, and then I used that money to pave Central Street this past year. So, you know, we do whatever we can, but it's not a lot of money.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And we're out, I know where, where all the potholes are, cause we're out filling them all the time. They were out today, they were out yesterday. We were out in the wintertime, you know, it all went along, and the, the way this winter was with the potholes, like John was saying on Mohawk. You know, if it, if it, you know, freezes thaws, you're plowing that up, it's not fun.
Do you have somebody in the office to answer the phone?
Yes.
I don't get an answer back.
We have, um, we know who's calling. No, um, I have somebody in the office, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so.
Okay, must have been Monday.
Yep. Well, we have a, we have a answering machine, so you can leave a message.
I do.
You sure you called the highway department? Cause I get all my messages, and I didn't see one from you.
I don't have your cellphone.
You're not gonna get it, either.
When I first started, when I first started, I beat my cellphone number out to a resident. And he called me at, like, three thirty in the morning and said, and it's, he lives on a dead-end street, and says, um, you haven't plowed my road yet. And it was three thirty in the morning, and there was probably this much snow on it, and it wasn't a hill, and I'm like, so I don't.
That's when you change your phone number?
Yeah.
I thought my job was bad, no.
I think we're, we're. I think we finished it, huh?
So you accepted those four roads?
No, one.
No.
Four?
We have one, one road on the warrant.
You put them on the ballot for the fall?
One road is on the warrant.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna work on it. With this year.
I thought you just voted for that.
It's too late.
The one you don't hear a full grade.
You know, if it was that easy, we would do it, but.
It's too late for this town meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's just talking about trying to, trying to work all out fall time.
Yeah, make a motion from the floor, like to amend this. Harry's good at that. We have to write it down perfectly and.
Beyond the scope of the article.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Is there anything else?
Hey, we're about done, aren't we?
Uh, we're about done, um, what else do we have, real quick? Anything under?
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one issue with Harry this morning, um, the parking modifications down at Noonan's. I have them, I have them planned right downstairs. Can I grab that? Now, I gotta get the other publication.
Quick look at that, yeah. I guess Noonan's is almost ready. Got a motion for a five-minute break?
Second.
Oh, thank God. Hello? So, other, under other business, we're, we're just talking about this, um, proposed modification to, uh, the Noonan site plan. That was approved by the board, um, several years ago. And, um, the project's in the final phases of completion, in accordance with the approved site plan. And what the applicant has found is that when trucks are coming in, um, northbound on Central Street. And trying to take the left turn into the site, um, because of the existing narrowness of the ingress lane. They're having to, the trucks are having to go in this area, which is already paved. Utilizing that existing pavement to get into the site, um, properly adequately. So what they're asking to do is to have this striped, not for parking or anything, but strictly for, um, the use of this area. For truck traffic to be able to safely enter the site. And in lieu of, um, having this pavement remain, because it, with the site plan, it was scheduled to come up and, and be vegetated here. But in lieu of that, if the board would entertain this remaining pa- paved, and strictly for, um, ingress traffic only. In, in having to do with trucks, and then in place of that, that impervious pavement staying here, down here. What was originally proposed as, uh, pavement surface down here. This new surface area here that I'm circling would become, uh, a pervious, um, walking service, uh, surface. So it, what they're proposing is stone down here. That would be utilized for pedestrian purposes, having to do with the retail use of this particular area here. So that would be pedestrian and retail use in this particular area, in these parking spaces, which, um, they were there for years, they would be taken out. So you'd have a per- pervious surface here. And this would remain impervious with the existing pavement. And they're proposing that as a modification to the previously approved site plan.
So, John, essentially tonight, what we're, why we're looking at this, is we're being asked to make a determination whether this is a significant change or an insignificant change, and whether we can do an approval for something like this. Just in a regular meeting, in our next opportunity, or if we have to, uh, if it's a significant change, and we determine it to be a significant change. Then we have to have a formal hearing, notice, a butters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Or whether this, the board may view this as insignificant, in which case, we get review of it, and the applicant would come in, present it. But wouldn't have to wait the, uh, month and a half or whatever it takes to do that.
In an insignificant change could also include, um, Larry reviewing, because this is all being engineered anyway.
There's money there anyway in the M account.
Right, we can have Larry review that.
I think that would be the best.
Yeah, and, and so that, this is all being engineered anyway. I met with the engineer, the engineer was there this morning at the meeting. So it's all engineered, it's going to be part of the ASBIL plan that's submitted. Per the agreement of the board to approve this modification. But part of the, say, minor modification, that modification can be reviewed formally by, um, Larry. Relative to making sure that drainage is still going to be, um, properly managed.
The drainage, it was somewhere up there.
Yeah.
Have you got it all, can you slide it down a little bit? That's the only thing I would be concerned about.
Hold on one second.
The drainage?
The drainage was.
Where, whoop, where it is?
Yeah, there we go.
I think you got it right there.
Yeah.
I think there's a, um, that line going off that way.
Remember there, there was a drain in the parking lot that was, the pipes are all the way over there?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna see that on this.
There's a stormwater basin right here.
I don't think you're gonna see the pipes on this one.
No, see, the, the drain, there's a, a drain at the parking lot, and it's all piped in to the far left of this. That's the only thing.
I don't think this plan will show that.
It will change it?
No, I don't think, I don't believe this plan would show that, that, um, that drainage.
This surface right here, this elongated, um, pervious surface here, that would help with, um, some of the drainage. Is that, you know, it's, right now, it's paved.
So in the interest of time, um, I, I, I'll, I don't know how everybody else feels. So in the interest of time, um, I, I, I'll, I don't know how everybody else feels, but if you'll hear it, uh, I'll make a motion to, um, determine, um, this change to be insignificant. An insignificant change with the meaning that, um, we can do this in a public meeting.
But we'll still have an engineer.
And have Larry.
Nothing changes, it's just a question of, is it a hearing, is it a meeting?
Gotcha.
That's the only thing that changes. A hearing we can do, a hearing we probably couldn't post, notice, et cetera, for a month and a half, two months.
Yeah.
A, a meeting, when John finds an opening, he can slip, slip it in.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but, but Larry's gonna look at it now.
Well.
That's what I would like to see.
So, uh, with, with the, with the understanding, my, I'd like to modify my motion if I may.
Okay.
So, um, everything I just said, plus with the understanding that, uh, Larry would review these changes and, uh, we would get a report seven days prior to the meeting.
My second.
All in favor?
Well, wait a minute, John's still writing there.
No, I'm fine.
You're killing him.
No, I'm good, I'm good, got it.
Aye.
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 Excellent motion.
Thank you.
He cut it off.
Nailed it.
Right, we're there.
I think we, I think we did very well today.
We did.
I think we relieved a lot of pressure about the unacceptable roads, I, you know, that, that was a big help.
I, I also think that Harry did a outstanding job observing the challenge that, uh, five forty-four, uh, was gonna have.
Uh, it's an issue, it's an issue.
Definitely.
I mean, it's, uh.
You did them a favor.
You know, when you have a supermajority and there's four members here.
That's everybody.
Everybody has veto right.
Yeah.
And I think that's gonna be a contagious, contagious, uh, issue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be discussion.
Yeah.
Well, he was just the engineer, correct?
You know, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have the same situation at our next meeting. And, and, um, I think I, I might be able to talk the, the May eighth applicant out of proceeding until we do have five members.
What, what is the applicant, I mean, if, the, do they have a hearing scheduled?
Not yet, not, not for the May eighth, that hasn't been, uh, scheduled yet.
What is this about, the, the, you said you had two there coming, who were these two?
Um, one is, um, Tink, it's, uh, a.
Marijuana?
Yeah, so they're coming in, but, um, they need all five votes, or four votes out of five. Um, and then the, the other one is just site plan, so that, that go forward, that's for the next meeting.
Site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's just.
The May eighth one that we're trying to schedule is, um, the Settlers Project.
Is that a site plan for, settlers are site planned for another marijuana?
Yeah, there's, there's five, um, Wednesdays in May.
So Settlers is coming back with the.
So, May first is a Wednesday.
That's the site.
Settlers is actually coming in for a hearing?
Yeah, but you know what, they're, um.
This will be the opening of the public hearing.
They get the special permit through, um, the, um, ZBA.
ZBA.
We didn't get a copy of that yet.
We're site plan approval.
I don't think they made a decision.
Just site, yeah, we're just site plan approval.
Or is there an approval for two buildings, um, two buildings on a lot?
That, that was through ZBA.
It's not both?
What's that?
It's not both?
No, because it's not a subdivision.
Right.
Remember, we had two.
Oh, it's multifamily, that's what, that's where our permit is.
But I didn't think they made a decision yet.
And then business, business on the first level, business on the first level.
Yeah, something like they were gonna do commercial.
Yeah, so I might.
But units in the back.
That will be registered.
So they only need three of the four.
It's a site plan reveal.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought there was a special permit in there somewhere, but anyway, and, um, stormwater regs?
There were one for May eighth.
May eighth?
Yeah.
So May eighth, we have that in Settlers. That'll be a full night.
There's two more applications coming in, but Larry right now is involved with five, um, reviews.
Wow.
Wow.
He called me up a month ago and wondered if we were still in business.
Did you tell him we are?
They're coming and everything showed up all at once, you know, there's boxes of plans, everybody, everything's being processed, so. We're gonna be busy.
Step by step.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be busy, probably halfway through the summer at least. Just with reviews.
On that cheery note, I, Madam Chairman, I would like to move, uh, to a adjournment.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Get out of here.
John, who was it?